Okay, we ready to go? No sir, okay. We could call the meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yeah.
Mr. Leahy.
Present.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the December 6th, 2006 Regular School Committee Meeting. Motion approved by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under memorials, we have three offered by Ms. Fatakante. Oh, I'm sorry, before we get there, permission to enter, there are some items, sorry, overlooked at. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, recommend the committee enter into the following contracts. With Charms Collaborative Program, $24,000 to provide for the out-of-district tuition cost for one student enrolled in receiving services. And Coastal Education Collaborative, $29,664 to provide out-of-district tuition for another student receiving services. Both to be paid with the Special Education Department budget, Special Education Tuition Account. And I just want to assure the committee that, at least as of December of '06, we are not over-budget and do not project to be over-budget with Special Education tuitions, though you have entered into contract possibilities that exceed the budget, but we don't expect to be seeing the fully contracted amount for a number of institutions. So at this point, our budget is in solid shape in tuition.
Okay. Any questions? There's a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Okay. Now, under memorials, offered by Ms. Fatakante, Christopher Worcester, son of Deborah Leno Hen, a talent search coordinator at the Butler and Stocklosa Middle Schools, and brother of Charlene Worcester, a Maury School teacher. Frederick Gallagher, retired Lowell High School chemistry teacher, husband of Florence Gallagher, retired Washington School teacher. John Foley, father of Mary Alice Foley, assistant principal at the Butler Middle School. And offered by Ms. Dougherty, Murray Furlong, father of Marcia Downey, daily school teacher. If we could rise in a moment of silence and darken chambers in their memory.
Thank you. Thank you. Please.
No items, I believe, under unfinished business or public participation, which brings us to the motions, first of which is offered by Mr. Leahy, request that the Subcommittee on Safety review the policy on student use of cellphones, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just would like to review our policy on cellphones in the schools. I think it's important today that we update our policy. I think we should ask the assistance of the principals of the schools, but it should be a clear policy on cellphone use on school property by students. For safety reasons and others, students should be allowed to bring them to school, they should be in their lockers during the school day, and then they should be allowed to use them after school for whatever calls they might have to make for pickup or safety reasons. But I think this is an important issue to review, update, and be very clear that any student, it should be reflected to the parents, that any student misusing the cellphone could lose their privileges. But I think this is a long time coming, and we should just update this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. Leary, request that the facility Subcommittee review the operation and maintenance department to ensure that efficiency is maximized and cost savings is achieved where possible, and to hold the appointment of supervisor of custodians until the review is completed. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Leahy, uh, Mr. Leary, I'm sorry.
Just quickly, the position of supervisor of custodians became available again. It's an administrative position that was created by the committee, I think, in '03 or, I think, '04 actually. Before we actually fill an administrative position, I think it would be prudent to actually have a review of the entire maintenance and custodial operations. I think we're gonna have a very, and I think, I know, we're gonna have an exceedingly difficult budget year coming up next year, where we all have a lot of programs we want to fund, example, summer school, what have you. I think before we start filling positions, once they become available, we should really review just to ensure that they're there for, that's actually one of the areas we want to, it's one of our top priorities. Thank you.
You. Ms. Dougherty.
I'd just like to add to that. I think the financial aspect is important, but I'm also concerned about the maintenance of our buildings in general, and I think looking at how our operation works internally, how we could improve its efficiency is a good step to take anyway, as well as working better with the city in terms of DPW work too. So I think it's a good step. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Under Subcommittee reports, we have a report from the Lowell High School Subcommittee, report and approval of the minutes of the December 18, 2006 meeting. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. The Lowell High School Subcommittee met with the Lowell Plan Subcommittee on the High School Monday evening, December 18th. Present at the meeting were myself and fellow Lowell High School Subcommittee member James Leary, as well as school committee members Connie Martin, John Leahy from Central Office, Dr. Carla Brooks Bear was there, as well as Jean Franco, Mr. Samaris, the headmaster of the high school, was there. And from the Lowell Plan High School Subcommittee, present were Jim Cook, the executive director of the Lowell Plan, Bill Hardy, Paul Mayott, Matt Murphy, Mark O'Neil. These are all members of the Lowell Plan Subcommittee, as well as Cheryl Sheridan, who's a member of the Friends of Lowell High School. She's a president of the Friends of Lowell High School. Basically, the meeting was for the Lowell Plan Subcommittee to update the school committee on some of the last few meetings we've had regarding the high school facility. And at the meeting, Dr. Bear outlined a draft plan of action that the Lowell Plan Subcommittee on the High School developed at its most recent meeting. And that was to look at the question, can we do what we need to do for Lowell High School students in the 21st century in the physical plant we've got as it is today? So there are a number of steps that developed from that question, and the first step was to have an assessment done of the facility right now, as it is today, the high school, looking at state standards for what physical plant is supposed to provide for students as far as the state's concerned. Other future activities with the plan would include working with that assessment of what we have now and looking at changes that might happen at the high school once we begin to implement the grant that's currently underway at the high school, to look at the small learning communities, how we might implement programmatic changes and how that would impact the physical plant. So that would be a further step in looking at the physical facilities at the high school. So one of the things that was discussed was the academic needs of future students. We are aware already of some areas where the high school falls short. As we know, the Reaccreditation Committee had some issues with the physical plant, and one thing that comes in particular, the science labs. So this is really kind of an effort to just do a total assessment of the high school plant as it is today, and what are some things that are lacking, or things that we might be able to improve on. And then to work more in partnership with people in the community and Lowell Plan members who are interested in developing what the future facility needs to look like and do to provide the services to our students. So there was a motion that came out of the meeting, was by Mr. Leary, seconded by me, to recommend to the committee as a whole that the Lowell Plan Subcommittee on the High School be authorized to develop a RFP, a Request for Proposal, for this facilities' needs assessment, that we, the Lowell High School Subcommittee would then review in January and bring back to the whole committee. And this feasibility study would be paid for by the Lowell Plan. Any costs in getting this outside consultant to come in and look at our physical plant would not, we would not have to cover any of those costs. And we would be looking at consultants who have done similar work in communities in the area. That was the motion. I'm open to any comments from my colleagues.
Okay. So moved by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Leary.
Just real quick, quickly, I think Committeewoman Dougherty explained it very well. I think just for the public at home, this is something that the committee is going to be driving with the assistance of the Lowell Plan. So it's not abdicating responsibility. They will work hand in hand with the Lowell High School Subcommittee and with the approval of that Subcommittee, and then finally the approval with the committee. So I think supporting this actual plan going forward is a no-brainer. So I definitely, wholeheartedly, hope everybody supports it.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. That concludes the Subcommittee report.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That concludes the Subcommittee.
Okay. So a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Subcommittee by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next Subcommittee report is on the Joint City Council and School Committee Subcommittee on School Building Programs, Report and Approval of the Minutes of the December 11, 2006 Meeting. Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. Just briefly, we, in November, we had our update meeting scheduled just to discuss the status of the two projects and where we stand. I believe the drawings and projects and plans and specifications are about 90% complete. They are still on target for a January bid date for both projects, to get them out and actually get a sense of what the actual cost of construction is. Both the architects and the project manager have been meeting regularly to reconcile the estimates they both have, and feel very confident that the numbers are still very solid numbers. But until we actually see a bid come in, we will then have a true picture of where we stand on the financial picture for the cost of these projects. On that note, we, the administration for the school department, as well as with the project manager, are working with the SBA to still talk to them about what is the best way for us to potentially approach these two projects from a financial standpoint. I think there is a loan program that's available and a grant program, so we're really having discussions back and forth to see what would be the best way to approach it. In essence, we're trying to get the biggest bang for our buck in the money from the state. So we're trying to look at all those options, so we could keep the, you know, the bond rating in the city very well and see what we could actually afford. So I think that's a parallel path that's happening at the same time as this bid is getting ready to go out to bid. One of the unique things that's changed with part of the SBA this year is that all contractors must be pre-qualified prior to bidding. So as part of the pre-qualifying, it's looking at the financial capacity of the company too, to make sure that they're a solid company, that there won't be issues down the road, that they go bankrupt, or they can unable to do the work. So that's a new twist. That's still being worked out until we see that happen. We're not quite sure how many bidders we could potentially get out of this project, but at least that'll give us qualified bidders. And if there are no qualified bidders, we have to actually resend it out, and then at that point, it's open to the general contractor to do the work or hire his own subs at that point. So it's a little bit of a twist on the traditional plan we walked down. So really, it was more of an updated meeting. That's really the status right now. We're on schedule to go out in mid to late January with the bids. I think that'll be the major milestone at that point. From that point, in a matter of, I think it's like six weeks, we'll actually have some numbers. And I think that's when the rubber will hit the road, in essence, at that point. Some decisions will be made, but by that point, we'll clearly understand what is the best way to move forward with this project, whether it's one project, two projects, or do we even, as far as the reimbursement, what is the best way to apply those reimbursements to the project? So it's really a report of progress at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Accept the report. This report progress.
Okay. Motion to accept the report is a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Under Reports of the Superintendent, first item is the October 1st Enrollment Report. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, committee members, thank you, Mayor Martin. The committee members have a copy of the enrollment status report based on October 1st enrollments for this current school year. A couple of highlights. Enrollment is at 14,482 youngsters in the Lowell Public Schools as of October 1st. Our enrollment at elementary has held steady, as we anticipated. Some decline at middle school as a smaller cohort of students works its way through the middle school. The high school enrollment is a little higher than we had anticipated as of October 1st. So it's a little bit higher than we had planned for. So we're gonna be looking at that to see if that marks a trend, and if we can understand that a little bit better. Forty-nine percent of our children have been identified as youngsters whose first language is not English, whose first language in the home is not English. And 30% of our children, just about one out of three, are currently not yet fluent in English and able to do academic work in English completely unassisted. Fifty-eight percent of our children are eligible to receive free or reduced-priced lunch. That percent has held relatively steady over the last five years. Fifteen percent of our children were receiving special education services as of October 1st, which again, over the last five-year period, is a modest increase. It's fully within, though, the norm for urban school districts as well as school districts in the Commonwealth. So there's been a slight increase over the last several years. More than 35 languages spoken by students. Happily, the main one is English, but after that, 20% of our youngsters speak Kamai, the language of Cambodia. Another 12% speak Spanish, 3% Portuguese. The Moody School and the Rogers School have the largest concentration of our Portuguese speakers. Those are the two schools where we have our bilingual and ESL programs for native Portuguese speakers. In a change since 10 years ago, and certainly 15 years ago, 95% of the youngsters that were in our schools on October 1st were born in mainland United States. So while we have a large number of youngsters who are not yet fluent in English, the vast, vast majority of the youngsters have been born here in the United States. The number of Lowell children attending private parochial charter or other public schools increased slightly from last year to this primarily because the charter school has added another grade. And so as the charter school added another grade, the enrollment goes up. There's a lot of information about enrollment and the demographics by school, by grade, and some trend data. I'd welcome committee suggestion for what to do with this report, in case the committee wants to further study it.
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to Superintendent. There is a lot of good information in here, and I would like to, I would like to send it to, I don't know what Subcommittee it would go to, but my main concerns are the middle schools. I'd like to, some of the schools, the numbers are high, and then a few of the middle schools, the numbers are quite lower. So I don't know if there's a way to balance it better. I think we should look at that. And I think the other question I wanted to look at was, is there a way to have more, I know we have the school zones set up, but I would think it would be helpful if we could get more local, more kids going to the closer schools to where they live. I think that would help maybe with busing. It would help where, in instances where you live in the neighborhood and you can't get into a school that's across the street. So I'd like to look into that further. But I think if we could try to get the numbers to even them out in the middle schools, I think that might be helpful. So those are a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fatakante.
Your Honor, thank you. If Mr. Leahy is looking at balance issues, that would probably go to the mayor's Subcommittee that you chair.
Okay.
On desegregation. Simply, and also, the last time that we changed our desegregation plan, one of the rules that we changed was that children who live closest to the school get a higher priority than children who live further from the school, so that if you are across the street, you don't get left out and somebody from the next neighborhood gets to get into that facility. So those were some of the changes that we made. And those were huge, because those were extremely important. So therefore, you're not having to walk your kid to the bus while people are having their children dropped off at the school that you would like to go to. I think it probably should go to the mayor's Subcommittee, because those are balance issues. And maybe, Your Honor, through you to the Superintendent, before we meet, maybe the Superintendent could supply the members with the information of the last series of changes that we made, to compare those changes to the questions that Mr. Leahy has.
Okay. Motion to refer this to the mayor's Subcommittee on Desegregation by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. McHugh.
Yes. Also, I think this is a great report. There's, as part of that, I think there's still one piece, there's one comment I want to make, is that I did notice that it appears that we're up a little bit on our pre-K program, which I was a little startled, because it seemed that the trend was with the transportation cut that we were going the other way. So I think that's one, you can respond in a minute. Any other interesting note, just on this chart, is from going into the high school from eighth, if you take the eighth grade numbers and look at what's going into the ninth grade, we're up 229 students. So I think that's a good thing. I think we're seeing that we're bringing those children that are in other schools back to our high school, so that, I think, all the hard work we've been trying to work on in attracting those students is working. So I think that's one, you can respond. And lastly, if, for a piece of information, the only thing I'd like to see is, and I think it kind of relates to Mr. Leahy's kind of request where he was going, is the average class size by school and by grade in school, if we could just get, I think that'd be very, you have all the information, it's just that one piece, we can really see what the average class size is by grade and school, is one simple spreadsheet. So if you want to respond, thank you.
If I could just comment on the preschool. The way preschool works, and I know you know this, is that as a youngster with special needs turns three years of age, that youngster is entitled to a place in our preschool program. Over the last two years, we've always left, made sure that we left an ample number of places for the youngsters who were turning three in the course of the school year. But what that sometimes meant was that we were under utilizing the spaces that we had available for youngsters without special needs. And so you often saw an October 1st enrollment for preschool that was fairly low. By the end of the year, it was much higher. What we've done in the last two years is try to look at the citywide data about three-year-olds so that we could do a much better job of estimating when they would be coming in, so that we can have as large a number of youngsters without special needs placed at the start of the school year. So it really has been a very deliberate effort on our part to maximize the use of the available spaces.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty.
Yes, I just want to, on the pre-K piece, ask for if we could have additional information on how those numbers break down in terms of non-English speaking students who are attending pre-K, students who are at or below the federal poverty level, because I think that it is encouraging to look at the number. My concern is we're not getting the kids who most need the preschool experience. And so I'd just be looking for more information on that group. And then the second thing I want to, the point I want to make was regarding something that Mr. Leahy had said regarding the balancing, and I know that we did change the policy to give preference to neighborhood schools for people who wanted to go to the school across the street. What I'm seeing happening with that policy is it doesn't come into play if the school year has already begun, which so many of our students are transient. People coming into the city or moving from a private school experience to the public schools, and if they don't catch it early enough, they might not be able to get into our neighborhood school. And I don't know that there is a solution to that. I mean, obviously, we can't be bumping people out of school or moving you up on the list because you live across the street, but you just moved there in December. But I think it's something we need to be looking at anyway, because I think those are the frustrated parents who call and say, you know, the school's right across the street, and I've got to get bused to the other side of town. So I just wanted to bring that up. I see that as a challenge that we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Just real quick too, and I agree with Committeewoman Dougherty, I've also noticed that as well, folks who are moving, just moved within the beginning of the school year or right before the beginning of the school year, you know, right across the street. I think there's one that I know from the Bailey that's being bused to another location. If we could look into that. But one other thing, I don't know if this applies here, I was just thinking of it, how many students that are currently within a particular school that are moved by that school to one of our open areas during the middle of the year? I know that that does occur. I just wonder if we could look at what the actual numbers are? I don't know how difficult that would be to pull together. Thank you. Is that something we could look at within this report? Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So motion to refer this to the, that motion had been made and seconded already.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next item is introduction of the school, I'm sorry, of school-to-home messaging system. Madam Superintendent.
Last Wednesday, we did our first district-wide telephone announcement message describing our new school-to-home communication system for parents. This is the, during the election season, some of you, I'm sure, had that happen in your home, where all of a sudden Kerry Healy's voice was on your phone message, or various of the political candidates. That technology is now available to school districts, and several neighboring school districts have used that last year, and we were able to collaborate with the police department in securing a grant that has enabled us to have access to that this year. So last Wednesday was our first test message that I recorded in English, went to all the homes of students in the district. So we used the telephone numbers that were in our student database. It's a really impressive system. It made 14,000 calls between 7:00 PM and 7:15 PM in the evening. And then those students that are coded in our database of having the language of Spanish got a Spanish translation of that message 10 minutes later. If the home, if we have it recorded in our system, that the family is Cambodian and the Kamai language is spoken at home, we did a translation in Kamai, we did Portuguese, and we did Laotian. And then, as you can see from this report, we get an immediate report back that gives us a clear picture of what, of the, who received those messages. So you can see that there were 14,086 student contact numbers in the database. Of the 14,000, almost 10,000 were unique telephone numbers, meaning that they're siblings that have different numbers. So the communication system does recognize that, and telephones, makes only one phone call to that, to a discrete number. So a family with four children doesn't get four separate phone calls, fortunately. Of the 9,667 telephone calls that were actually broadcast, 76% were successfully delivered to homes via live pickup at the home, or messages that were left on answering machines. Of the 4,980 homes that answered their telephones, more than half responded to a survey question. This was our test of the system to see if people would stick with the message to know that they needed to hit number one, if they were in, this particular survey was number one, if their child is in the Lowell Public Schools and they had the correct number. And then two, if they were not, so that we could know that the number was an incorrect one in our database. And then of the 24% that were unsuccessfully delivered to homes, we had an immediate printout of how many were bad telephone numbers, that is, numbers that no longer exist, how many got stuck with busy signals, because maybe somebody was on the computer at home and had a busy signal, or fax modem signals, or no answers at all. And so we were able to produce a list of all of the numbers that we did not get through to by school, by grade. did not get through to, by school, by grade, and by name, so that we're able to return that list fairly quickly to the schools, so that they have an immediate knowledge of which phone numbers they need to chase down, which youngsters need numbers that we need to chase down, and make sure that we've got accurate numbers in the system. We were pleased that 78% of the live pickup, the people that actually picked up the phone and answered it, 78% of them stuck through more than three-quarters of the message. So it meant that I didn't completely bore them to death with my introductory message. So that's the kind of data that we can get every time we use the system. And the system can be used now at the school level, so a principal can use it just for the students at his or her school. It can be used for just particular grade levels at a school. It can be used just for youngsters that were absent that morning. So it really has a very great potential for us to really strengthen our communication with families. Some of the principals have now begun using it, and they've used it to, for example, call the day before, the evening before the math night that's being scheduled at the elementary school, as a reminder to families of when the night, math night is, and inviting folks and giving them some more information about it. So we think this is going to be a big help to us in our efforts to reach out to families, to engage them and inform them about what's going on in the school for their children.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I just have to say, I was one of those parents who got that phone call, and I was just thrilled that we have the technology to do this. And then to see the numbers that, you know, it seems doable, that percentage of students whose numbers we don't have accurate, that we can actually get those numbers and get that information into the database, so that we can start to follow up on things like, Johnny wasn't in school today, please call the office, you know. And I just have one quick question with it. Does it cost every time we use it, or is it just?
No. It's an annual, it's an annual fee on a per-student basis, and we have essentially unlimited And there are a number of companies now competing, now that this solution has been identified. So this is something that I would anticipate the cost will go down over time, now that the software and the solution is really well-developed, there are now competitors, and I think we're going to see the cost driven down.
I think this will dramatically change the communication potential between the school department and families. I think it's just, the possibilities are huge, with a real, have a real ability to impact our relationship with families and getting kids to school, and information about homework, everything. It's just great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, does the contractor help with tracking down bad phone numbers, or is that all on us?
It's on us.
Okay. Okay. Anything further? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, again, I think that this is one of the ways that school districts, ourselves, certainly, it's nice to be at the forefront on this. We do need to be creative and innovative in the way we communicate with our community, with our, with the parents, with our students. I think this is one more tool that we now have, to really be able to reiterate that profoundly important connection between home and school. We need to do it in a multitude of ways. We need to do it in ways that engage parents in their child's education, in a way that they're comfortable with, in a way that they find helpful and positive. So I think that this is, the ability to be so specific in our data management, and in our, you know, number selection, really does give us an opportunity to have very targeted, effective communications that I think, so, you know, again, given the counsel of, you know, Kerry Healy didn't call me, because I was not on that list, but I got a number of calls from candidates on the other side. And they do, you know, the efficacy does go down. I think we need to be wise in the way we use this technology, and I think if we do that, we really are going to be able to have a new product that is incredibly compelling, and again, strengthening those bonds between home and school, which in the end, really just benefits our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
If I could just build a little bit on Ms. Martin's comments, I know the committee, the committee conceived of the idea of the safety summits, and then of developing a video of the safety summits, to do a composite that provides a lot of information for families about safety, to make up for the, partly to make up for the fact that it was a fairly very low turnout for those safety summits. We, I would anticipate that once we have that safety video all put together, we'll be able to actually use this system to let families know when it's going to be broadcast on local cable. And we'll also be able to do that video with voiceover in Kamai, and then send a message to Kamai families, saying that the one in Kamai is going to be on such and such a station these three times. I think we'll be able to give very targeted information for families, and help them do what they want to do, which is to stay informed.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next report is on update on facilities. Madam Superintendent?
Yes. This is a semi-annual report on operations and maintenance. We do one in the summer, and this is the first of what will be, I think, an annual winter, winter report for you. This covers five areas. Wanted to just quickly comment on a few. On the HVAC system, I know committee members have gotten calls over the last several years that the HVAC system at the Pine School and the Pawtucket Elementary Schools hadn't worked properly since, once they were installed, when the schools were renovated. And it looks like we finally have solved those problems, we're cautiously optimistic that we're finally going to have those systems operating well. And you see a report here on several of the other systems that have undergone some significant repair and calibration to improve some chronic problems. We haven't solved all the problems, but this is, I think, bodes well for tackling some longstanding issues. Mr. Curley's also, has given you an update on the elevator situation, which was an unforeseen problem that we, that struck us in the summer of some uninspected elevators. A report on the opening of school, some of the staffing issues that we have faced that have, that we've attempted to work around. And then finally, a listing of the facility upgrades that we've been able to do at a number of our schools, to make them safer, more aesthetically pleasing, and more functional for the educational work at it, that is their primary reason for being. So welcome any questions or comments from committee members.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I don't know if it should go through you or Mr. Lang, but I was just curious. It says at the Sullivan School, security gates are being installed at the gym. What does that mean?
I'm going to ask, you're right, I'm going to defer that right over to Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
And I will get you a report for the next meeting.
All right.
I honestly don't know.
Okay. Just struck me. But, and I did talk to-
I can answer that.
Mr. McHugh may know.
I can answer that.
Sure.
There are gates to keep people from going down the hallways throughout the buildings. So they have these-
Oh, when they're using the gym at night?
There are codyan gates that, they just use them at night, so when people come in to use the facility at night, that they're not going down into the regular part of the school.
Oh, good.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Now, thank you for this report. This is very helpful, and it's, glad to be updated on this. Thank you.
Mr. McHugh?
I just have actually one question. I noticed there was a lot of information on the elevators. Can, are all the elevators working properly at this point, that we know?
Yeah, that I do know. They were actually all re-inspected. They are all currently functioning properly, and will be on our annual inspections for the springtime. But all were fixed, all issues were resolved, and all are currently functioning.
So in other words, in this spring, we'll do a reinspection, any work will be taken care of over the summer prior to-
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is the list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
I have no comments on both of the next two reports, I think are self-explanatory.
Motion to approve the list of eligible teachers by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the list is approved. And motion to accept the personnel report by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, personnel report is accepted. Under new business, request to establish a tuition revolving account. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, you have a detailed memorandum from Assistant Superintendent Lang outlining the rationale for establishing a revolving fund for non-resident student tuitions, and the mechanism that he has developed in collaboration with the Chief Financial Officer for the city. I think this will be helpful to us, and I would recommend committee action. Mr. Lang is obviously prepared to answer whatever questions committee members might have.
Thank you. I guess I would just ask, how do we do this now?
The, I did speak with Tom Moses, the Chief Financial Officer, we researched the requirements for this fund, and what the actual authorizations would need to be. And in the last paragraph, the actual vote that the City Council would have to take would be to accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 71, Section 71-F. So I'd be asking the school committee to accept that, and to request that the City Council actually do go on record and vote and accept that, and then we can work with the Treasurer and the Auditor's Office to actually set up a revolving fund. It would be similar to our food service fund, where we have revenues that come in from our food service. It's actually going to be a way for us to be able to take in some tuition payments, possibly, for some of our specialty programs, like the program we have for the deaf and hard-of-hearing students at the McCall for the LeBlanc, and we can then actually be able, through the budget process, budget that money, and help offset some of the operational costs associated with those programs.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, through you, through the Superintendent, through Mr. Lang. Just, can I ask a question? Where are the circuit breaker tuition reimbursements placed now? Are they in a separate fund, or would they be, that be independent of this, correct?
They'll be independent, yeah. The circuit breaker funds are held totally separate. They're in their own fund, they have their own fund code, because those are for Lowell Public School students.
Okay. So is it a revolving account, or is it a, just a separate fund within the city?
The circuit breaker funds, actually, it's set up right now as a special grant fund.
Okay.
It's given a separate project year for each year that the revenue comes in and the expenditures go out. But it's set up as a special grant fund right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion to recommend adoption of this to the City Council by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Ms. Martin?
Can I ask, first off, what had prompted this? I mean, in looking at the actual students that we're talking about, in terms of special education students who'd be coming in, I mean, that's exactly what we had been talking about, in terms of developing our, the LeBlanc therapeutic day program, in terms of, you know, developing these programs, that we would be able to act as a resource for other districts, to have more local placements, to offer these very specialized types of services for their special ed students. My question, though, is, recognizing that, are we also now going, making a shift against our, I know that historically, our school choice participation, we've always voted against participation for other, you know, regular ed students to be able to come into our district. Are we negating that through this process? Because I would have real concerns about that.
Mr. Lang?
Do you want to do it? Or Madam?
Good.
Okay. Yeah, I know I-
Both of us have something to say. Go ahead.
I can take maybe just the financial piece. The implications of the vote would not, in my eyes, undermine or change at all your vote to not participate in school choice. These particular students wouldn't be like students at large wanting to come into the school system. They would be for specialty programs, like your LeBlanc, let's say. And I think the committee could actually, after we establish this, set parameters on what type of students, and in what circumstances you would want to open up these programs to. So strictly on the financial line, this is just actually to set up the mechanism, so we could have a fund to actually accept the funds into. And then I, you know, programmatically or whatnot, policies could be made at a later date.
Madam Superintendent?
I think the question you're raising, we should double-check that, to make sure that there isn't any conflict. But the intention is that these would be students, this becomes an out-of-district placement option for districts who have youngsters with particular special needs, and they're choosing from among, you know, the program for deaf and hard-of-hearing students in Newton, and the program in Lowell. So that's the intention of how it would function, and not open up any other possibilities. I think that's worth an extra call to the Department of Education to make sure. But I know in any case, we would always have the option of, even if we accepted school choice, we could always identify the limits of that. So the limits would be, students only admitted to this special education program, this special education program, this special education program. But that would not be in our interest, because we would want to charge full tuition cost, not the school choice number of $5,000. So we want the full tuition cost associated with this.
I would appreciate, if we could just pull it together and get the most accurate information, and in terms of developing the parameters as to, you know, under which we'll accept students, I just want to counsel that we do need to be particularly clear. And I, again, I think it is extraordinary, and I think it's exactly the direction that we've talked about, many of us on this committee for quite some time, about being that specialty, having that specialty service to be able to offer some of our other, our fellow districts. So I think that that's a really positive move, but I do want to make sure we're doing this with all of our T's crossed and the like, to ensure that we're not taking on more than we anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I'll just throw this out, too, that this could be a way, too, that if we built the Sapporo Sarah School, if we ran a couple's specialty items over there, that'd be a good way to offset the cost and show the need for that school. So that's something we should look into, too, because we've talked about that also. So, thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
We've been limited, we've been limited to making sort of in-kind sharing between districts, is the way we've been able to, you know, occasionally have a student in a special needs program. This really regularizes it, makes it, you know, the monetary exchange that it needs to be.
Okay. Does the committee want to proceed with the vote this evening? I can tell you, the next City Council meeting is not scheduled, I think, until January 9th. The school committee is going to meet, I think, on the 3rd, so-
So I withdraw my motion, and we'll delay it to the next school committee.
Want to make a motion to delay it?
Yes.
So, motion to delay action for, until the next meeting by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, so we'll place this on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Under convention conference requests, there are two requests for conferences. Any questions or comments?
Move approval, Your Honor?
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Your Honor, may I?
Ms. Fatacante?
In light of the fact that it is that half the school year is already over, I would suggest that we take about $10,000 from in-state travel and move that to out-of-state travel, so that we have enough in our out-of-state travel budget, because I know it's getting slightly depleted. And if people are doing more out-of-state travel than they're doing in-state travel. Could we do that this evening?
I think we need a motion to suspend the rules in order to do that.
Motion to suspend the rules, Your Honor?
So, it's motion to suspend the rules to take up a budget transfer item by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And thank you, Your Honor. That would-
Rules suspended.
That would be to transfer $10,000 from in-state travel to out-of-state travel.
All right. So motion to transfer $10,000 from the in-state travel item to the out-of-state travel item by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you.
Okay. And under professional personnel, we have one item. Members of the United Teachers of Lowell request to donate sick day leave to the following paraprofessional, Hilda Morales, Bailey School, eight days. Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. I believe that concludes the agenda. As your motion-
Motion to adjourn.
-to adjourned by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy.
Happy holidays, merry Christmas, happy new year to everybody.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We will stand adjourned, and yes, best wishes to everybody for a merry Christmas, happy holiday season, and a happy new year. Thank you, and we'll stand adjourned.
Eight o'clock.